This is the regular meeting for May 17, 2016. Please rise for a moment of prayer, silent reflection, and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we begin tonight, I'm going to request a moment of silence for Karen Tamburo and Antonio Tinney at the table. Karen worked here at City Hall for 27 years as a senior account clerk with the Public Works Department. Tinney worked as a part-time meter maintenance employee for 16 years. Please join me now for a moment of silence. Thank you. Clerk will call a roll.
President Destefano.
Present.
Alvin Downey.
Present.
Friedman.
Here.
Carrika.
Here.
Haddad.
Here.
Keith.
Here.
Mia.
Mia.
Moore.
Present.
O'Hara.
Here.
Rector.
Here.
We're on the desk tonight from the informal meeting have an error on the date of the council public hearing. The date on the public hearing should read April 19, 2016. With that said, can I have a motion and a motion to dispense with the readings of April 19 and place them on file? Motion by Greg Rector. Alexis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Karen. Motion to dispense with the reading of the City Treasurer's report as of April 30, 2016 and place it on file. Can I have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Committee reports, committee reports are on the aldermen's desks. Can I have a motion to place them on file? Alexis. Lauren. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carrie. Communications. First communication from Columbia County Planning Board regarding local law introductory number one of 2016, establishing the RSC zoning district and to designate hotel as a conditionally permitted use in the southern waterfront area, RSC two district. The next communication is from Jonathan Mariner and he is the chairman of the Conservation Advisory Council regarding the Department of Environmental Conservation's Hudson River Estuary Program Stewardship Grant. We're going to be acting upon a resolution that pertains to this actual communication later on. The third communication is from the Hudson American Legion inviting council members to participate in the Memorial Day ceremonies. Fourth communication is from Columbia County Board of Supervisors, a resolution authorizing for the office of the agent to operate a congregate site within the city. Fifth communication from Hudson City School District, notification that the district is seeking to ask a lead agency to seek for review for the construction of a 1.2 megawatt power generating solar array on the existing school district property.
Can I, can I vote some more?
Sure.
Columbia County Board of Supervisor filed a resolution for site, site manager of site work of the senior center. And they're looking for resolution, something accepted as far as our common council president. May I tell me to talk to the candidate, bring a resolution, how would you work that out? He emailed me. So anyhow, that's a different opinion of the common council president. So anyway, I'd like to say that give them one month, we can, we can come up with the idea, how we work with the council, how the Columbia County or program we need will replace, and we can work, whatever with the Columbia County. And as a commissioner, they should do it, but we don't have a commissioner, American contract, no problem, or he has a chairman contract. So, so give me one, everybody, after one night mark, we'll be bringing the resolution or contract, how the, how the work with the Columbia County and try to as soon as possible open the senior center. Whatever they provide us service and rest of the city will be provided and make a match, then we can work it out. So we give them one month notice, say everybody look into, if you have any idea, give us idea, how work out, work out, how is the legal way to do that, fine. So that's, that's my thing. So I don't know, I try to bring some resolution, say some, I don't want to be putting any resolution back down because let them, you're all are thinking how to work out that, that that. Thank you.
John.
You're talking about this, right?
Yes.
Okay. So it references a contract and what we don't have.
There was no contract yet.
And it's, it's, it says no cost for utilizing the facility, my reading context is that it's no cost to the county, which was a huge surprise to me that the county would contribute to the city of Hudson. Yeah, I, I don't know what we're supposed to do with this. Just accept it as a communication? Is that it, or?
Right now, right now, I think we're accepting it as a communication on, on the basis that it may become part of our aging groups set up for how we get senior center open. So right now, it's, it's the county's view on how they can help us open. And until, and until we, we could get concrete city projects to meld with what the county can provide us, that's, that's where we sit right now. Question, Supervisor Scler or Hughes, county's going to supply us with financial, he requires somebody to look at the senior center and to oversee that senior center? Is that why they don't have that law? Yes.
The position is fully funded by the county, the position and also the benefits that come with the county. As far as the contract, the contract isn't a monetary contract, this is based on rules and regulations. The county basically want the city to clarify that the place is handicap accessible and that, you know, it's going to close at specific hours, open at specific hours, and that it's just rules on how the food is to be handled, things of that nature. It doesn't include any kind of monetary monies to be offered up by the city at all. So that's what the contract is basically going to entail.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, and last communication is a letter from our legal counsel regarding the, it's a legal opinion, and I think I'm going to ask him to discuss this with us. If you don't mind.
Sure. Question came up to whether.
Did I pass something? No, okay.
Question came up as to whether it was necessary to get BEA approval for budget changes, officially budget increases. And it's my opinion that any increase in any budget item requires the approval of the BEA before it can be effective, with the minor exception of intra-departmental adjustments of up to $500. There's actually an underlying question I didn't get to, but as to whether budget amendments can even legally be made after the budget is finally adopted, but I'm not going to get into that. That's a, that's a different question. But going on the basis that the city can make changes after the budget is adopted, question is what needs to be done. It got Article 16 of the Charter covering the board of estimate and apportionment. You know, it does, it seems to be mainly about the original budgeting process, it does, something that doesn't express the limit itself to that. What it says, most significant section is section 1614, "For the power of common council to reduce budget," says directly, "The common council may reduce any items or amounts fixed by the board of estimate and apportionment, with a couple of exceptions, but the common council may not increase such amounts, nor vary the terms and conditions therefore, nor insert any new items." There's another provision that governs the transfer of funds between budgetary items, C-16-6. That seems clearly to be directed to moving money within a department because it authorizes any department or office or board to direct the, per measure of the transfer of $500 from one item to another, where one has a surplus and one has a deficiency. Obviously doesn't make sense to allow one department to steal money from another department. It only makes sense for an intra-departmental shift. Even then, as soon as you get over $500, even within a department, it specifically says that the BEA has to approve it. And when you get to a transfer of $1,000, the BEA and the common council, but the BEA has the first review even at $500 number. You know, and given that it's required even for an intra-departmental move of more than $500, certainly it can be more significant if you're moving money from, you know, intra, intra-departmental or from the budget, you know, fund balance into a budget item. There's a specific section in the Charter 3411, talking about increase in city spending in relation to raises given to city employees. Specifically says there that any increase in compensation to a city employee cannot be considered by the common council until it's prior approval by the BEA. You know, the way the Charter is set up, it seems clear the BEA has a central role in formulating the budget in the first place, but also if that could then be, to allow subsequent amendment to the budget without the BEA's approval would have the effect of completely nullifying their role, because if they were instrumental and necessary in forming the budget and immediately thereafter, any changes could be made without their participation. There wouldn't be any point in having them at all, because you could just, they could just pass it and then everything could be completely redone. You know, obviously you have the treasurer there, you have, it's there for an oversight purpose, you know, and it would be completely irrelevant and nullified if their role ended at that point. And there isn't anything, the only thing that does talk about changing them specifically says that the common council cannot increase the laws, but can decrease them. You know, the Charter is not obviously as clear as one might hope in some of these things, but everything that's in there seems to point to the conclusion that the budget or budgetary items cannot be increased without BEA approval of it. As far as the timing, it doesn't seem, it isn't really addressed whether the BEA has to sign off before coming to the council or after. In that one section 3411, it specifically says that the BEA has to approve it prior to coming to the council, but otherwise it's not addressed. So I can't say that it really matters, except that if it doesn't have both, it's not effective. So, and my conclusion is that no budgetary line increases can be made without BEA approval, whether they sign off on before or after.
The BEA consists of the treasurer, the mayor, and the common council president?
Yes.
And all three signatures is needed for approval or just two?
It's two out of three, isn't it?
Two. Two out of three. So with that being said, and the mayor appointing Ken Howenbeck as the youth commissioner and the budget that they brought in to the youth and aging committee for several months, and then they create the chair, create the resolution for the youth department so they can get the items that they need for the youth department that are broken down and with it, and also for staff. And the reason why it has not gone through is because of the non-approval of the BEA. So can Karen explain why the youth department is not going to get what was requested and worked on for so long?
I'm not going to say they're not going to get what they're going to get. I, I am, I understand that that number, the forty thousand.
Fifty.
Fifty four. Fifty four thousand dollar numbers was something that might, that's being adjusted, that Ken Howenbeck has been asked to adjust that number. And that, and knowing that would, would, knowing that that's supposed to happen is the reason why I wasn't going to sign it.
I agree. You know, I would maybe suggest that the BEA would take a trip down to the youth department and see what is needed and why that request was put in, because it's not just with this term, but the youth department, excuse me, but the youth department has been in need for quite some time.
I had a big interest. Yes.
So all commissioners placing the budget for the committee. And commissioners should be what they're, that's their executive. Commissioner Ken Howenbeck was the first time put in a $108,000, now $108,000. Then they are working, Mayor and Ken Howenbeck. Mayor never put in a, oh, I wanted this, this, this coming to commissioners to come to the, immediately. Is, is commissioner did not approve from the mayor, they are executive body, they are not a council. Mayor never put it in, say, oh, I'm just, I'm the chairman, they said then I need this budget for the year. Department commissioners, give me that budget. If they didn't discuss, they discussed a couple of months, I know, that, that happened. That is their lack of communication. Second question was a, another resolution was a come out from the commissioners and mayor and to me, push through this resolution. I pushed through, same amount, same thing, same, but it is, it is pulled through and by the mayor. My question is, if, I don't know, what is the common council need for? If BEA three people say, okay, we don't need anything, they're holding everything, all 10 people passed the resolution, nothing happened. So what is it, what is it need for? So what is, why, why is it workable? Let's, we're on the show. So we're on the show, that's the happen. But I'm, I'm respectful to all lawyer and common council, I see the different, different council, council give the different opinion. I know the past of the one of them going, the different council give the different opinion. One bill give you the one, another, another lawyer give you the other one. This happened to this associate. So I'm, I'm respectful them, but I don't know, we should correct it. I, I don't care if it's not going or not, we should correct it. Why we work, we come in there, the hour is from the BEA, that's not a, a work, I believe that. Thank you.
John.
Well, I think that, I think that the memo in its penultimate paragraph really outlines the guy and synthesizes the analysis, and it's consistent with this body's past practice, which to me ratifies it in some degree and makes it a nice break from other analyses of past practice, who usually come back saying that we've been getting it wrong in the past. So this is nice. I, I don't really understand why there would be any complaint. This is an enshrinement of a separation of powers. It's one of the few areas where the Charter maybe gets it very right in its, in its separation of powers designation and allocation of powers. And again, it's consistent with past practice, I don't think, see this as revolutionary or groundbreaking or anything. I think this is just business as usual and we should move on.
Thank you. Anybody else? Man who motion is second to place these communications on file. Mike, Alexis, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Resolution number one, appointing commissioners of these. Roll call vote.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Downey.
Aye.
Friedman. Carrika. Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Scler.
Aye.
Designating the Register Star as the city's official newspaper, roll call vote.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Downey. Friedman.
Aye.
Carrika.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore. O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Scler. Carrie.
Accepting a DEC grant of $91,780 and authorizing the issuance of license to the Hudson Loop Cup as grant administrator, administrator in furtherance of the purposes of such grant. Roll call vote.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Downey.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Carrika.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Scler. Carrie.
Approving change in terms for matching a New York State DEC local stewardship planning grant and authorizing execution of the associated rate contract. Jonathan, would you like to make any comments regarding this?
I wasn't here at your informal meeting, so I'm not sure whether it was discussed or, do you want me to?
We, we had, we had your communication.
We had your, your document.
So does anyone have any questions about it? I don't, I don't want to belabor the point. A mistake was made in the filing of the, the way the grant application was filed and now we have to make up for money differently.
Roll call vote.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Downey.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Carrika.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Scler.
Aye.
Ratifying and approving change order number two for the Hudson Police and Court Central Project dated April 21, 2016 in the amount of $11,500. Roll call vote.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Downey.
Aye.
Friedman.
Before I vote, I'd just like to say that, you know, after the conversation last week and then this evening at the Finance Committee, I'm hoping that this council and the mayor's office and the treasurer's office can come to some resolution where there's a streamlined process where all the interests are represented. I prefer the BEA take on the role of approving or disproving these change orders simply because it's faster and more efficient and all of it, all of the stakeholders, I think we've been calling them, are represented by the BEA, theoretically at least. Anyway, yes, but with reservations.
Carrika.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
No.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scler.
Aye.
Carrie.
Authorizing the mayor to execute change orders with prime contractors for the Hudson Police Court Project. Roll call vote.
President Destefano.
Excuse me. The, the resolution to authorize the mayor to execute change orders with prime contractors of the Hudson Police and Court Project, it was in discussion to eliminate number two and number three and have Rob Perry and, I'm trying to think, Bob.
Joe Rapp.
Come to the informal meeting and explain the council's purchase and what was needed, but to leave the total of all punitive change orders shown up, exceed the remaining contingency of 300, 550 without council approval.
I am, I am going to suggest to Rob Perry and to Joe Rapp that as these start coming in, that the council be aware of these changes.
We should.
Are we eliminating number two and three from this resolution?
What's the figure, 3,000 or 200,000?
If you notice the change order, I can't see without 20,000.
Okay, so most projects will probably be over 20,000, so if we move that 20,000, then we go back in and Rob Perry can say, it says 30,000, 40,000. Do you think that this project should go forward at those rates rather than having a limit of 20,000?
Just to be clear, the 20,000 is for a specific change order. The 200,000 is.
Okay, now we have a specific change order and it's going to be 30,000, over and above this 20,000.
Needs to come back here before.
You know, we bring in Joe Rapp and Rob Perry, but we just eliminate this 20,000, any, you know, project, and they come in. No, that's something that they go with twenty thousand, eliminate the twenty, now it's thirty.
They don't come in for any change.
I, I don't think your reading is.
They're not coming in for any change as long as it's over twenty. And those are going to be.
Says the limit is twenty.
Right, so anything that's over twenty, then we'll hear about it.
That's okay, that's it.
Well, that's what it says.
That's what it says. So just only the twenty thousand, they come in here anything.
I.
No, no, if it's any kind of one dollar to twenty thousand dollars, we're not giving.
Not only one dollar.
No, correct, but if there's any minimal change that doesn't necessarily need to tie up our time, that would fall under there. So if it's something more expansive that you're referring to, then we would get it. Right now, if it's twenty, under twenty thousand or less, the mayor can do it, approve it. If it's twenty, if it's more than twenty thousand, nothing can happen until it comes to the council.
It's actually more restrictive than that as written because if, there are a series of related change orders that in themselves are less than twenty thousand, but together equal twenty thousand, and then the mayor also, it doesn't have the authority under three. So I don't know why you would want to change either of these, they're both limiting, because both limiting the mayor's power.
Right now, there are only two options, under twenty, the mayor can approve it, over twenty, it has to come to the common council. There's no middle ground right now with, say, the BEA or, you know, there's other people involved, it's one or the other right now. So if you want to modify that, just, just want to be clear that they're here right now.
And I would suggest that we modify and make it the BEA because then all three branches or two branches of government and three different agencies, all of which have expertise theoretically or at least obligations as to the fiscal health of the city, are represented where these change orders are being discussed.
I would support that.
I don't think it should be here.
This is to expedite.
Yes, to expedite.
So if they have to meet the three people later, you know, let's say a week from when this might have to replace that delays.
I, I, I don't doubt that one person is quicker than three people, but zero people is quicker than one person, but there has to be some oversight. And the, the council can't, can't abdicate its obligation as the final arbiter of, of the finance of the city, or can the treasurer abdicate her responsibility or that office's responsibility to, to oversee the, the finances of the city? So, and the mayor's the chief executive of the city. So she, her responsibility is, is paramount. And, and I think all three of them together, again, they're, they're used to working together, they're used to working together on, on financial and budgetary issues. And they, one, two of them are full-time employees of the city. So there are times they are at the city's disposal, the other is a part-time employee, but, you know, that doesn't, they don't have to meet face-to-face, they can meet telephonically or electronically through, through some, some online conferencing facility.
Does that constitute a meeting where somebody can affect a change or whatever?
Yeah, I think so. You can ask a lawyer, but I'm pretty sure. So at least everybody can see each other and hear each other, or at least hear each other. Hearing each other is the sine qua non on the corporate side.
All right. So are you making a motion to revise this resolution?
Well, if there's support for it, I, I, I think it just makes sense. One, one person is good, three people are better. I don't think it's going to significantly slow down or complicate the process and, and this way everybody's responsibilities are being seen to.
Heather, what's your opinion?
I basically agree with John's idea, but I would add another layer. And my idea would be that the mayor has signing authorities up to a certain amount and the BEA, much like the budget adjustment process, the BEA would have authority up to a certain amount and anything that exceeded that amount would require a special meeting of the common council because I think if we're going to start getting substantial change orders when we've been told that we were going to get no change orders and if they're going to start showing up and asking for forty grand, I think that the people responsible for that should come forward in front of the common council and explain why. And I think they should be forced to explain beyond just the BEA. So that would be my, that would be my counter proposal.
I, I, I think that's a really reasonable.
So then, I would question what are the amounts?
Okay, so are you going to make a motion to?
I, I make a motion, that we, we do just that, that, you know, perhaps below five thousand dollars, a single order for below five thousand dollars, the mayor on her own authority can approve. That between five thousand and twenty thousand, the BEA, on the two to three, you know, the two-thirds vote can approve and above twenty thousand, which is ten percent of the contingency, it should come to the city council for an explanation.
In a second.
And, and the only, the only thing I'd like to add on the council side is if, if it's something that needs to be voted on in an expeditious way in order to keep work in progress, that we may need to call special, especially may need to do so.
I think we've always shown ourselves willing to meet on extraordinary circumstances.
That being said, a motion is second to amend, so we need all three. Okay, so we have a motion and a second by John Friedman and by Rick Rector and we need a, well, uh, we need a.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well. Okay. Was there any opposition?
No.
Not.
On the amended resolution. On the amended resolution, roll call vote.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Carita.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Sklera.
Aye.
Carried.
Authorizing the execution of a contract with revised LLC for the city's website development and maintenance, roll call vote.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Carita.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Sklera.
Aye.
Carried.
New resolutions tonight establishing the standard workday and reporting to New York State, the local employees retirement system. May I have an introduction, introduction in a second please? Mike, Bob, any discussion? Roll call vote.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Carita.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Sklera.
Aye.
Carried.
Compensating organizations for the city's two thousand sixteen arts and entertainment and tourism contract awards, may I have an introduction and a second? Rick, Alexis, any discussion? Roll call vote.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Uh, sure.
Carita.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Sklera.
Aye.
Carried.
Authorizing the temporary transfer of money to be reimbursed by insurance claims filed against third parties for damages to city facilities. May I have an introduction in a second? Henry, Priscilla. Any discussion? Oh, any discussion?
Just reading.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were. Roll call vote.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Carita.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Sklera.
Aye.
Carried.
Authorizing execution of a contract for the printing of the two thousand sixteen Hudson is a summer festival booklet. May I have an introduction and a second please? Rick, Alexis, any discussion? Roll call vote.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Carita.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Sklera.
Aye.
Carried.
Requesting and supporting the passage of New York State Senate Bill S dash zero seven seven nine zero, authorizing the city to impose hotel and motel taxes. May I have an introduction and a second? Mike, Tiffany, any discussion?
Can I just point something out? The Assembly has not yet introduced it in the Assembly, so right now we're just limited to requesting passage of the Senate bill. I talked to the Assembly, they have a different, they have different deadlines, but the, the Assembly won't want a resolution, but they can't accept it until bill's in its final form and such. So, might have to do that actually at the next informal meeting because the legislative session closes, I think it's seventeenth of June. But it's, just so you know why it only has one, the Senate bill hasn't been introduced as a bill number.
Any other discussion?
Uh, it's been introduced in the Senate. Senate Bill Zero Seven Seven Nine Zero.
Roll call vote.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Carita.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Sklera.
Aye.
Carried.
Authorizing the issuance of a temporary license to Hudson Cruises Incorporated for the use of a, of a Hudson River dock. May I have an introduction and a second please? Rick, Tiffany, any discussion?
What are we waiting for, for a permanent license?
There are just some details that have, this is, this thing has a long and tortured history.
Yeah, I know, that's why I'm really kind of.
There are just some details that are in question and with the meeting coming up tonight, just got to iron out a couple of things. There are questions about what's locked and what's not locked and, that's why.
This is two months?
Just till the end of June, just will iron them all out for the next meeting. You know, have the, you know, more, more extended final version, you know, obviously your formation of length and duration and such, but yeah, the idea is to get the, you know, a several year thing in place in time for the next meeting. But to just to allow them to go forward at the next month.
A small type of the, for the docking of a tour board, is what it says, preferably
meaning a tour boat.
Yes.
Last paragraph correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Tour board, circle?
Yeah, circle.
Okay. Any, about any other discussion, changes, provisions? Roll call vote.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Carita.
Aye.
Haddad.
No.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Sklera.
Aye.
Carried.
Accepting a donation of two hundred fifty dollars from COR to the city to be used for the senior center. May I have an introduction in a second please? Priscilla, Alexis, any discussion? Roll call vote.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Carita.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Sklera.
Aye.
Carried.
List of bills are on your desk, may I have a motion in second to pay the bills? Alexis. Roll call vote.
President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Carita.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
And Sklera.
Aye.
Carried.
Any new business?
Robert, the council. Sarah. Sarah Sterling, Union Street. I see about the committee reports, the late, the open meetings law is that minutes should be posted within two weeks of a meeting. And I see on the city website that March is the last posting of minutes. And the only minutes for the Arts and, I mean, the Youth and Aging Committee are from January third, I believe. So with all the controversy going on, there's no way that I, as a public citizen, can know what's happening with the committees. So I would like to register a complaint. And this has been, happened other years too, that the committee reports are not done. A timely report, sometimes never, so I would ask you to please comply with the open minutes law. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to just point out that under the communications, Jonathan Werner is cited as chairman of the Conversation Advisory Council. And I didn't know we had a Conversation Advisory Council.
But aren't you happy that we?
I am. I, I think it's a wonderful idea and it might raise the level of conversations among the.
Thank you for pointing that out. Anything else? Okay, the only thing I ask is if you motioned the same thing, please, please see that documents are signed before you leave and I will motion, ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Henry, Priscilla, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.